At this time, we have roll call, please.
Here.
Councilman Lopez Viado.
Present.
Councilmember Shoemaker.
Here.
Mayor Potem Wu.
Yep.
Mayor Johnson.
Here. Reporting now in closed session, Mr. City Attorney, is anything you report, Howard?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
City Manager, any changes to the agenda?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. If I may, I'd like to remove item six from your agenda tonight. I'll return with that at the next meeting.
At this time, we have a few presentations we're going to give, so I'm going to come down front. You hear me now? Okay, I can hear myself. Okay, we have a few presentations. First one's for Small Business Saturday. I'd like to have called forward Paulina Morales, Economic Development and Housing Manager. Please come down wherever you are. Here she come. The city of West Covina is pleased to announce that the city will be participating in Small Business Saturday for the fourth time. This year's event will be held on Saturday, November 30th, 2019. I would like to present Paulina Morales, our Economic Development and Housing Manager, with a proclamation to share with our business community proclaiming November 30th, 2019, as a small business. I give you this proclamation right here, and I'd like, if you want, to say a few words.
Sure. Hi, good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mayor. So, every year after Thanksgiving, we have Small Business Saturday, and it's a way to encourage our residents and consumers to shop local and shop small, really to help promote our small businesses and help support them. They are, they have great contributions to our communities, and so we want to give back to them. So, this year, the city is hosting our small business program. We've been doing it for a couple of years, but this year, we're really trying to encourage and reward those residents that participate in shop small, shop local. So, every time that you shop or visit a participating small business in West Covina, you'll be entered to win a raffle prize. You do have to sign up for a program, and it's all online. We have the flyers both for if you're a business and want to participate, or if you're a resident and want to participate. So, the prizes will be gift cards and gift baskets. And so, like I said, every time that you visit a participating business, you get, you enter an additional entry into the raffle. So, we hope, encourage you guys to shop local, shop small on November 30th for Small Business Day. I'd like to call up Councilman Dario Castellanos. He'll be presenting another certificate.
Thank you, Ms. Morales. I'd like to recognize C.S. Taylor Shop for being a West Covina small business. Mr. Carlos Solis opened his shop in our community in 1999 and is celebrating his 20th year anniversary of being a West Covina small business. I'd like to call up Mr. Carlos Solis. And his son, Josh. I'd like to present you guys with this certificate. Thank you very much, and congratulations. Would you like to say anything?
Thank you very much for this, sorry, for este reconocimiento. Thank you.
Recognition. Thank you, sir. Congratulations.
Okay, our next presentation for the Gold Service EMS Award presentation. I'd like to call up Fire Chief Capelli. Please come forward. And I'm going to let you tell everybody what it's all about, and I do have an award for you.
Thank you, Mayor. You're very welcome. So, the West Covina Fire Department was honored by L.A. County Department of Health Services and American Heart Association, second year in a row. This year, we're a gold plus EMS provider in the County of Los Angeles. Last year, we were a gold. This year, we're plus, which is better. They recognize our care when it comes to American Heart Association guidelines and care for cardiac care and stroke victims. So, in 2017, 18, in strokes, in City of West Covina, we responded to 62 and 48. 62 of them in 2017 and 48 in 2018. 96% of those, the paramedics got it right, and the person was having a stroke, and we got them to the proper facility to get care. In 2017 and 2018, we had 70-plus cardiac arrests. And cardiac arrest is when a person is not breathing, and their heart is not pumping, and where they need intervention immediately. 30% of those times, the paramedics were able to get return of spontaneous combustion, which is spontaneous circulation. Sorry, I got fire and EMS messed up there. 30% of the time is excellent, when it's usually four to five minutes of no oxygen, where you can't get recovery. So, we're going to show a video of one of those times that the fire department arrived on scene and was able to successfully get return of spontaneous circulation on a victim we responded on. Who played the video? Sorry, I have a little technical difficulties.
Well, that day was basically a normal other day. We had lunch, and then we went out to play, we're talking and everything, and all of a sudden, Adam falls forward. And we thought it was a joke, because it was April Fools. And we thought he was going to put his hands out, but he never did. And then, he fell onto the concrete. And then Joshua went to him and then saw blood. And then I ran to go get help.
I had a lot of different things going through my head, so I was scared. It was the longest drive I've ever had. I could hear a new nade on the walkie saying, "We need an ambulance, we need an ambulance. A student's hurt, and there's blood."
His, his body was very limp, and we knew that it was more than him just falling and hitting himself.
You don't think that, you know, it's so dramatic that it's, his heart is going to stop on campus. Like, that doesn't happen. Like, when does that happen?
It just seemed like an eternity from us saying, "We need, we need help, we need help," and then hearing the firemen's sirens approaching.
I have my drug box and my monitor going towards him, and there's just a sheer look of panic on the teachers that are there.
And at that point, noticing that Adam's breaths had stopped, and we started shouting, "Please, please, he just stopped breathing."
When we first arrived on scene, we found Adam lifeless. He was clinically dead. He has no heart rate whatsoever, and he isn't breathing.
My partner, Joe, got on chest compressions right away. We got the IV established. We put the pads on him, shocked his heart. And then, within about three minutes of that, there was a beautiful agonal breath. Adam gasped.
And the feeling that I felt, that chest rising underneath my right hand, was the most amazing feeling. That same feeling of watching your kids born, that's the same feeling I had when Adam took that deep breath.
They called me and told me the paramedics are taking him to Queen of the Valley. And I said, "Why?" They wouldn't tell me anything. They just said, "Just go straight to the hospital."
I was the emergency doc on duty, and I heard from the nurse that this 11-year-old boy was coming in. He had been unresponsive. He had stopped breathing, didn't have a pulse. When I heard that, my first thought was, "Oh, no, this is not good."
When we first arrived at Queen of the Valley, it was great, because we have the doctors and nurses ready to receive Adam. They take him into the room, and they continue to monitor him.
He got here, and he had just resumed pulses upon arrival. So, they got his heart beating again. His mom was there, and his dad was there. And it's one of those emotional moments. I have kids, so it's hard. Those cases are really hard.
I was thinking, I was thinking the worst. I was thinking, my son was gone. Was he going to be? Was he going to be with me? Was he going to be okay? I had a lot of things going through my mind, questions, why? Why him?
We need a bigger ER. We have had a lot of good changes, directors. We have more resources now. We don't have space.
Frequently, we don't have a room that's open. We have to wait for a room to open up. That causes delay in patient care. And the fact that we don't have enough beds for the patients, or spaces for the patients, takes longer for us to see them, because there's nowhere to put people.
Sometimes I'm nervous and worried about when my family calls 911, or if you call 911, we're going to be unable to necessarily respond to you. There's been times where we've been at Queen of the Valley, and we're hugging a wall. We're sitting there with the patient, still providing medical care, but we can't get them a bed. And so, we're hearing calls on our radio go out that we cannot respond to. And most of the time, those calls are more serious than the ones that we're with. And we have a stable patient, but we can't leave, because there's no room for them.
That also contributes to the congestion in the hallways, because we have our patients who are waiting for their results, patients who are waiting to be seen. So, it gets a little tight.
So, to have a new ER, a bigger ER, I feel it's a responsible thing to do for the community. I've been in this community for the past 14 years, and I've seen M&amp;A Health, Queen of the Valley, take care of their patients in, like you would your family, like you would your friends. And they, they are the community's hospital.
So, for me personally, I would love to see the ER grow and be able to provide better services, more services to the community.
I can't even imagine what would have happened if my son would have not been treated, if he would have been turned away because the emergency room was too full. No, he wouldn't be here. Adam's doing great. Adam, you know, he's fine. He's healthy. Doctors have, you know, cleared him to play sports and to do pretty much anything that he wants to do. He's a healthy little boy now.
I'm thankful that the West Covina paramedics and fire department arrived when they did. And I'm grateful for the Queen of the Valley Emergency Department. They were able to get Adam the help that he needed to get better.
Luckily, we have a really good team here. We have really good doctors, really good nurses. And we all did our part to make sure that he was able to see his parents again.
No matter what, we won't forget that day, but we try to leave it behind us. My family and I would really, really like to thank the whole staff, doctors, nurses. From the bottom of our heart, we're really grateful to them, because if it wasn't for them, my son wouldn't be here.
So, that's a great success story of the West Covina Fire Department being there to serve the community and get return of spontaneous circulation. The fire department and the responders were honored at an event by Queen of the Valley, and they will be honored again by the city and by the fire department. One thing I want to point out, one thing that we can work on in the community, which we have plans in the near future, is our citizen CPR. Last year, we had, like I said, 70 cardiac arrests, or it's 27 in 2018. Only 14% of those, which isn't bad in the county, but it could be a whole lot better of citizens initiating care CPR to the patients. And we want to work on that in West Covina, and the fire department is going to be a key factor of that. We're going to do that. We'll look for some great things in the future for citizen CPR. Thank you very much.
Thank you, chief. And on that note, just a quick reminder how precious life is, how it can be gone in an instant. So, I want to say thank you so very much for a fire department for a fantastic job they did. At this time, we have the Golden Eagles of Los Angeles Area Council. Tonight, the City of West Covina would like to recognize Troop 433 for their victory at the 2019 Golden Eagle Los Angeles Area Council Camp ORE. To speak more about it, I would like to invite the Troop 433 and the Scoutmaster, Armando Santos. Please come forward.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for having us. I'm proud to say that Dab and Britt, our senior patrol leader, happens to be holding the spirit stick, that these boys worked very, very hard to win last year in 2019. They've actually won it three times out of the last four years. And there's, this is within over 400 scouts competing for this spirit stick. So, they put in a lot of hard work, a lot of effort. And I just want to say, we meet at the Knights of Columbus every Tuesday evening. If anyone, everyone wants to see how these boys run a troop, it's a boy-run troop. They become very successful, successful adults. And just thank you so much for having us and recognizing, recognizing these boys and their achievement. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Everybody, just please come on up here. We're going to get some photos of all you guys up here. Please, and I have a certificate to give you. On both sides. Let's go on both sides. Do you understand that? Come on, guys. Come on both sides of your troop mat. You go on both sides. You guys like each other. All right, before we get away, I do have a certificate, and we want to get one more picture with it, if you would. It's a City of West Covina Certificate of Recognition for Boy Scouts of America, Troop 433, Golden Eagle Los Angeles Area Council Camp. Let's get another picture with all of them, buddy. Thank you, guys. Congratulations. Congratulations, guys. Congratulations. Now, before I go and sit down, I, I didn't think I was going to make any mistakes tonight, but I already made one. I forgot to mention who our choir was. Our choir was from the West Covina High School Choir, and Director Tyler. So, I want to personally thank them for the fantastic job they did. Can we give them another big applause, to let them know that we didn't forget them? Thank you. At this time, I shall open up our communications. If you haven't filled out a yellow card, please do. They were up on phone out there. And you hand them to our city clerk, and she will call you out. It's up to you.
Thank you. I'd like to call forward Herb Redholtz, followed by Johnny Chua, followed by Colleen Rosati.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Packed house. Wouldn't that be great if this was this way every meeting? Have a full house here of residents. Mayor Johnson, Lloyd, I've known you a long time, probably going on 25 years. And I'm here tonight to tell you I'm proud of you. I'm proud of you. You have risen to the occasion. You represented this city as the mayor for the past 18 months with dignity and honor. You know, you've been to every event. You've been the face and the voice of the city at all of these functions, and you've served us, you've served us proud. And, you know, if you're looking for someone who's an eloquent speaker and who can string words along as if they were poems, Vin Scully's your guy. Lloyd Johnson, not, not so much. Not so much. I'm working on it. I'm getting there. But, you know, if you want a guy that's, you know, got a big heart, that's looking out for the people, he's a man of the people and for the people, that'll listen to you, take your situation and your issues seriously, and follow through on it, and get back to you, and make sure that it's been resolved to your satisfaction, Lloyd's your guy. And, you know, you did a great job. I want to thank you for that. And I look forward to your continuing, you know, on the city council. And, you know, we, the residents, and the citizens, and the businesses in this city are lucky to have you up there. So, thank you very much for that. And Tony Wu. Tony Wu. Didn't want to screw that. That's a tough name, Tony Wu. It's a tough name. You know, this is, this, this council has had a lot of firsts over the years. You know, we had Nancy Manners was the first female mayor of this city. And we had Frederick Sykes was the first African-American, sit on that, up there as the mayor. And I believe Richard Melendez was the first Hispanic that was sat up there. And Ben Wong was Chinese-American, the first one. But I believe you're the first immigrant to... Fresh off the boat. One of my favorite shows, by the way. One of my favorite. If you haven't seen it, check it out. It's a great show. But, so this is another first tonight. And it kind of shows that, you know, we went to, we were kind of forced to go into districts, because apparently we weren't, you know, diverse enough, and we weren't electing a diverse crowd. But if you could look back over the years, we did it without anybody telling us to or being forced to. We did it because we elected the people we wanted to, and they did a good job. And we didn't care, you know, whether they were, you know, white, or black, or Asian, or Hispanic. It didn't make any difference. You know, if they, if we felt they were going to do the good job for us, we elected them. And then, if we liked them, we elected them again. And if we didn't like them, hey, we didn't. That's why you have elections. But, you know, Tony, we're looking forward to a good year from you as mayor. Too bad you couldn't get anybody to come out and support you tonight, but, you know, maybe, maybe next time, you know. But anyway, it's, 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 please do that. Please do that. You know, it's, it's a testament to your, to your popularity and your likability and your ability, and we're looking forward to a good year. And, you know, the city is, needs good leadership, and, you know, we think we have it. And we look forward to a good year. Congratulations to you moving forward. Congratulations to you, Lloyd, for doing a great job. And we look forward to good things from both of you and the whole council. Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. Everybody, my name is Johnny Chua. I stand respectfully in front of you tonight as the president of the Filipino American Chamber of Commerce, San Gabriel Valley, to congratulate Lloyd for a very good year. As I quote the gentleman said, "I would have known you if you were not have been elected," honestly. But I missed the cowboy hat, you know. Didn't worry, you know? And likewise, I came to know Tony, look forward to working with you, and I will always support what the council of City of West Covina and, and, you know, endeavors. You will always have our Filipino community's support, okay? And likewise, wearing many hats, I'd like to, I'm the, one of the founding director for the Chinese-American Association of Walnut, here to congratulate everyone as well. Tony, for your incoming mayorship, and more power to you guys. And another last thing, on behalf of City Blessing Church of Walnut, I'm certain that all of your council have received the invitation for the annual, this is the sixth Lights on Miracle Hill event, which the opening ceremony would be December 7th. So, I hope you guys will make it. This is, I always said, one of the only kind in the entire San Gabriel Valley. Opening ceremony is on December 1st. Everybody here is invited. It will, the event is concurring nine evenings of the weekends of December, from 6:00 to 9:00. It's free. Just come in. Everybody's welcome. Enjoy the show. It's a, it's a Christmas light show for everyone to enjoy. I look forward to everyone. Thank you. Good night.
Good evening, Colleen Rosati, West Covina Beautiful, along with the city treasurer. Thank you. I want to announce that West Covina Beautiful will be doing our annual Home for the Holiday Decorating Contest. Contest applications are now on our website and our Facebook. It'll begin on December 9th. Judging will take place on Friday, December 13th. Please fill out the application. Join us. It's a fun event. Watch our Facebook for the voting. We had about 7,500 people last year reach out to West Covina Beautiful on Facebook and vote. It was fun. We've also added another component, a Home for the Holiday Toy Drive, which will also be on December 13th from 6:00 to 9:00, and that's also on our Facebook. Bring an unwrapped gift for a child for any age. Help fill Santa's workshop and make a difference this holiday season. In closing, I'd just like to say to Lloyd, thank you. You've done a great job. You should be very proud of yourself. You've led this city with dignity, grace, and passion, and I'm proud of you. I'm proud to call you my friend, and I wish you all the best.
Is that the last one?
Correct. We have no more speaker cards.
Okay. At this, at this time, I shall close the oral communications, and we open up our consent calendar for... From what I understand, none of the items are going to be polled off the consent calendar, but Mayor Potem will be voting no on item number three. Is that correct? Okay. And I know our city manager polled item number six earlier. Okay. So, do I have a motion to accept the consent calendar?
So move.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We have a roll call, please.
Councilman Castellanos?
Aye.
Councilman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Councilmember Shoemaker?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Wu?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye. Okay, that's 5-0. Now, is there any mayor or council members' reports? Did we have any 1234s to report? Seeing none, we shall move forward. So, we don't, we do not have any public hearings tonight, anything? So, at this time, we shall move into our city council reorganization. You know, I'd like to say something, if I may.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. You know, first of all, before I do, I would like to say thank you to my wife. You know, she has put up with me for the last 18 months above and beyond we did. And with all her support, I don't know if I could do this. You know, it has been a real honor being the mayor for the last 18 months, representing the residents of this great city. And like it says, as being the mayor, which our Mayor Pro Tem, our future mayor, we will find out this, I did at least a half a dozen or more events, small business events, that they wanted just the mayor to be there. They didn't want, they didn't want the whole council to be there. So I attended them because I was the mayor. I don't care if it was a small business or a big business, they're all the same in the City of West Covina. And last, we're trying to make it very short and sweet, because our new mayor, he's going to take up the rest of the time.
I would talk forever.
On this one, what I do want to thank, I want to thank this council for appointing me and trusting me that I would represent the office as mayor in a high dignity manner. Without your trust, I couldn't have done this job and had the opportunity to do it. So I want to thank all four of you, thank you so very much for the opportunity to do it. So at this time, we shall move forward. And with the confirmation of our mayor and our Mayor Pro Tem, at this time, I would like to nominate Mayor Pro Tem, Tony Wu, as our new mayor.
I'll second that.
Okay, seeing no objections? Isn't somebody wants to object? It's 5-0. And our next one is, I would like to nominate Councilwoman Leti Lopez as our Mayor Pro Tem. Do I have a second on that one?
Second.
Okay, seeing no objections? It's 5-0. Okay, now we shall move forward. I have to become mayor?
Okay.
It's your job. Okay, you can go down this morning? All right, yeah, we have to meet Mayor first. We gotta argue about this, okay, let's go do it.
I'm acting as a mayor, because I have been swaying yet, so, but, but I want to do this so I can talk to my buddy, okay? Lloyd Johnson is a fine mayor, okay? Year and a half, we work together, we're like husband-wife. Another wife, another wife, he's my another wife. No, okay, but anyway, the point is, is, okay, we, we, we love each other, we help each other, we went to China together, we, okay, really, and then we fight, right? We have a different ideology, and I think that sometimes that is what this is about. Even we on the dial, we have a different idea, but we still friends. And off the dial, we help each other. And we compete, okay, who go to more event? He go that one, and I see the Facebook he posts, then I right away go to the two. And he beat me fair and square. He went much more than me, maybe double, okay, because he's retired, he have all the time. And I still, I still have a day job, okay, so, so that's not fair. But anyway, it's so proud, call Lloyd Johnson my friend, okay, and a good mayor. And I really thank you, okay, for this year and a half, and we work together, we call each other, we present the city, he represents city well. I'm so proud, okay, I don't want to see you go, okay, and you will be the mayor again. Yeah, you move to, yeah, I'm going to send him to Siberia, he can move to another side. But, but he's going to, okay, be elected again next year, I wish you all the best, okay, so he will be a mayor again, he's a fine mayor. But other than that, I want to be mayor, hurry up, so, so. I've been waiting year and a half, it's about time, okay, so. I don't, I won't be truce, but, but he is a good guy. Lloyd, you want to say something?
How do you follow that, right? It has been an honor working with Tony, you know. We sit in the mayor and pro tem meetings, we do certain, different things that we have to do, and we worked really good together. We, yes, we've agreed and disagreed on quite a few things. But you know what, friendship never got in the way. You have to separate your politics from your friendship. And Tony and I have been able to do that, and we will always do that. Even though he's outside bossing me around now, since he's the mayor. Whoa, wait a minute, no, but anyway, once again, I want to thank this council. I want to thank my loving wife for standing beside me all this time. Without her, I wouldn't be doing this. You know, from when I first, when I first got elected, when I first ran the first time in 2013, she was the last one to know that I was running. She said, "I figured you were, but you never told me." In 2015, when I ran, she was the first one I told. And she stood behind me at 100%, and she still does. So here, moving forward, Tony, I wish you all the best in the world. I know you'll do a fantastic job as a mayor, if we can just get you to put one, as a council, we decided, you know those collars that you put on your, your dogs to train them from barking too much? Well, we decided we're going to buy one for Tony. So when he starts talking too much, we get that little buzzer. No, Tony, I want to thank you so very much, my friend.
Thank you so much. He, no, he talking about, do I have still a mic? Okay, he talking about the buzzer, okay, because sometime I have a big mouth, so, so he buzz me, okay? If I kind of out of line, he going to buzz me, okay, so, but anyway, it's just a joke. We, we good friend. I, I hope, I hope it's a joke. Jessica say no, Jessica say, Jessica say it's not a joke, okay? They're going to put an electric shock on me, okay, so, Mr. Mayor, shut up, okay, so, I know. But anyway, we represent West Covina, it must such an honor to have my buddy girlfriend for this year and a half as a mayor. And here, as a small gift, I cannot believe you can take this cover up, okay, so, so this is real stuff. So, so you can practice at home. But anyway, thank you so much for your big, okay, dedication for the job, okay, thank you.
Now you go to Siberia.
Oh, I have to pay for it.
I'd like to call forward a few individuals who have asked to come forward to speak on behalf of outgoing Mayor Johnson. First, I'd like to call forward Danica Mendoza, District Representative from the Office of Senator Rubio.
Good evenings, good evening, West Covina Council, city staff and residents. My name is Danica Mendoza, and I'm with the Office of State Senator Susan Rubio. On behalf of Senator Rubio, we'd just like to congratulate outgoing Mayor Lloyd Johnson. I commend, we commend your exceptional integrity and loyalty to our residents. You have represented our constituents with honor, and your service has made a difference in the quality of life for our community. So thank you so much for everything you have done for our community and our residents within the last 18 months, thank you.
Next, I'd like to call forward Los Angeles County Assessor Jeff Prag.
Thank you very much. So I know what everybody's probably thinking. How do we really capture the spirit of why we are here today? And the way you do it is by hearing a speech from the county property tax assessor. So, and let, and let me simply state for anybody who's confused, I don't collect taxes. There's another guy with a really intuitive title, he's called the Tax Collector. So it's easy to differentiate, but I'm really thrilled to be able to be here today to share with you, this is a very special occasion to mark your one-year term as, very long-term, as mayor. I served as mayor four times at the City of West Hollywood. It's, I was, thought it was a great privilege to be the mayor, it was even better privilege to be the former mayor, because you don't have to get up so early on Saturdays. And I did want to just say a quick note about your decision to hire your new assistant city manager. He used to work for me when I was in the City of West Hollywood, he's a great guy, Mark Brusco. But after doing a lot of hard work for the city, it's appropriate that, that we recognize you for that, for that service. And I brought a really pretty certificate that you put on your wall. Hopefully it will impress people. If it's, and if, and if not, at least make a copy of it and put it in with your tax bill. And if that works, I want to know. But Lloyd, on behalf of the County of Los Angeles Office Assessor, I'm pleased to present you with this proclamation. I'm not going to read it, suffice it to say, it says a lot of nice things about you. And you could read, and you could read, whoever else could read later, but congratulations.
And lastly, I'd like to call forward Taylor Valmores from the Office of Assemblywoman Blanca Rubio.
Hi, everyone. It's my honor to be here on behalf of Assemblymember Blanca Rubio to recognize this fine man beside me. I just want to say that, Mr. Mayor, you are a public servant of purpose, a man of the community, and here in West Covina, we are lucky to have you. And I know our work isn't done, so we've been seeing you around, and I can't wait to finish the term. And on behalf of the California State Assembly, Assemblywoman, and the Assembly District of 48, thank you so much for your service.
Mayor Wu, if you'd like to come down now, we're going to call forward Pastor Hamel of the Christ Lutheran Church to administer the oath of office to Mayor Tony Wu.
Okay, now, all serious now, Tony, okay? Your left hand on the Bible, and raise your right hand. Please repeat after me. I, Tony Wu.
I, Tony Wu.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemy, foreign or domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose or evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties of mayor of West Covina.
Discharge the duty of mayor of West Covina.
Upon which I am about to enter.
About which I am about to enter. Thank you so much. Yes, presentation? No, I will do presentation first.
Yes, if I could have Danica Mendoza with the District, the District Representative for Office of Senator Rubio come up.
Hello, me again. On behalf of Senator Rubio, Mayor Wu, we'd just like to congratulate you on your installation as mayor to the City of West Covina. We applaud your commitment to our community and look forward to the success that you will bring to our region and our shared constituents, congratulations.
Thank you so much.
If I could have former mayor of Walnut, City of Walnut Mary Chu on behalf of Assemblyman Dr. Philip Chen of the 55th District come up.
She call me honey.
Just 49. You see, everywhere Tony goes, there's a laugh, there's a joy, isn't he?
Yes.
Exactly. It's my privilege to know Tony for the last couple of years. And being an elected official, public servant, actually, is not that easy. He has a very successful business, but he willing to come out to serve the community. I think we should give him a round of applause for his dedication for the West Covina people and also for the Asian community.
Thank you.
I really cannot say enough how much I appreciate his advice as a friend. He give a lot of funny advice. But, you know, for last couple of years, I really see he out there represent West Covina. Every single event, he will tell the people, say, "West Covina has 100,000 overpopulation."
120.
120. So he make a free advertising for West Covina. I think he is a really good representative. But anyway, congratulations for your dedication for Asian community for City of West Covina. We are really, 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 really proud of your achievement, congratulations.
Thank you.
West, outgoing mayor. Outgoing mayor, actually, we have one for you from Dr. Philip Chen. I'm sorry, I did not hear your city clerk, could you please come up also? And Lloyd, I know you did a great job, you know, I want to echo your resident what they were saying earlier, yes.
Yeah, if people don't know who is Mary Chu, Mary Chu is a, is a city councilwoman of Walnut and mayor of Walnut for so many, many times, so, that's what Mary, thank you so much for Mary willing to come over here, thank you so much.
I get to steal a little bit of his thunder, I think they all heard me.
If I could have the Los Angeles County Assessor Jeff Prag come up, please?
I didn't know he was speaking twice, but you should go grab the city council with you.
You are tech assessor, you can do anything.
So, Tony, I'm thrilled to congratulate you and your elevation to the office of mayor. You're following a lot of really fine public servants who have held this position in the past. And as you know, West Covina has a tremendous reputation in the community as being one of the finest managed cities, led by some really outstanding public officials like yourself. And just very proud of you and congratulate you today. I too brought you a certificate, it's not nearly as big and fancy as the one I got for the mayor, the outgoing mayor, because you haven't done anything yet, so. So next year, after you have a whole long list of accomplishments, I'll bring you the long one.
The double size.
This is just- This is just the one that you can hand out to people and say, "See, I'm mayor," it says right here. But anyway, and I'm not going to do a formal presentation, but I brought one for the mayor pro tem. You can call me mayor pro tem as well. Congratulations, lady. I'll follow the direction from the mayor. Yours is even smaller because the... We don't want to put you... Give the mayor a little bit of a special extra booth. But that's for you, Tony.
See, I'm bigger.
Okay.
This year. Next year, at your demotion party, we'll get you the even bigger one.
Bigger one.
Congratulations to both of you.
If I could have a council member from the city of South Pasadena, Michael Caciotti.
You're riding a bike to our city?
Yes.
She's AQMD. She's going to raise your tax.
Tony, thank you. On behalf of the residents of the western San Gabriel Valley of South Pasadena, I want to join your friends, your relatives, the Chinese community, fellow council members, your staff. Honoring you tonight, I've got something for Lloyd too in a moment. I noticed a lot of people came with certificates. So it's the holiday season, so I want to do something different. You remember 2,000 years ago, there were people coming to watch the birth of a Christ child? What did they bring? What did those three magi bring? Gold, frankincense, and myrrh, so...
Is it real gold or is it fake?
So, no, it's real. So hold this, Tony.
I'm going to buy them.
Mayor, in our city, we have a special medallion we give out for special occasions or special recognition. This is our city's seal. It's the city tree, the oak tree. And it says, "Preserving the past, celebrating the present, and reaching for the future." And that's what West Covina is about. And I've been honored to join these men at different events in the San Gabriel Valley. The mayors, council members get together to work on transportation, air quality, homelessness issues.
China too.
And I was about to say that. I wouldn't forget. And in this January, in sub-zero temperatures, I was able to spend time several days with Lloyd.
Harbin.
In the city of Harbin. And what's the name of the region called?
Harbin, Hailongjiang.
Hailongjiang Province, right adjacent to Russia, below zero, the river was frozen.
Minus 20 degrees.
Minus 20. And I observed these two gentlemen among 35 to 40 mayors from around the world, plug your city, encourage your city, encourage people from China to come over and invest. I was very honored to be there myself. So on behalf of the city of South Pasadena, myself, as a four-time mayor and council member, it's my honor to present you with the city of South Pasadena Honorable Medallion. Mayor, mayor, congratulations.
Lloyd, thank you for your...
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Tony?
Okay, yes. For the elected official, would you please come up? Larry, the mayor of La Puente.
So if you can have Valerie.
Okay, and any other elected official? Josh, you want to come up? Yeah.
Former Senator Josh Newman and Albert Ambries from...
Formal, but you elected before.
I have nothing with me, just my admiration, my respect.
No, no, so come up, come up, come up. Any elected official come up, please? Okay, and we want to recognize you since you are either riding the bicycle or take the bus. So far, you're long distance. Are you driving or...?
I'm driving my car.
I like it, okay. You're my man, okay. But thank you so much. Want to say something?
Yes, on behalf of your neighboring city, city of La Puente, we want to thank Mayor Lloyd Johnson, or former Mayor Lloyd Johnson, for all of your service, as well as Mayor Tony Wu. We look forward to working collectively with you. But also, I represent the city of West Covina and the San Gabriel Basin Water Quality Authority, representing cities with non-pumping rights. So on behalf of the San Gabriel Basin Water Quality Authority, I look forward to continue representing the city of West Covina and working with you all. So thank you.
Thank you. My name is Albert Ambries, for mayor of the city of Irwindale. I'd like to, on behalf of the city of Irwindale, the council, and all the staff, I'd like to give a fellow devil dog congratulations and the job well done as your mayorship, as your mayor. It's obvious that you are really appreciated of all the constituents here and staff and your colleagues think I really highly of you. Tony, I don't got a big mouth, but thank you for inviting me over. And I am sure with this new position as mayor, you're going to do an outstanding job.
You're a good friend, good neighbor.
Yes, we are.
Yes. Thank you so much.
And as one who's had a chance to represent this area and work with many cities, I want to commend both of these gentlemen. And I want to let you all know that you have a wealth of wonderful public servants in West Covina and in your new mayor and your outgoing mayor, two of the very finest public servants I've had the pleasure to know. So congratulations to both of you.
Thank you, Josh. Josh was state senator, okay, last year, right? So anyway, I don't want to say anything, okay, campaign, okay? But good luck, okay? I'm neutral, okay? But good luck, okay? So anyway, thank you so much, guys. Thank you, thank you. Appreciate it. Any elected official want to come up and say something? Mike, you want to say something? Okay, you're good. It's okay, I don't mind you didn't dress, okay? You can come up, you want to say something? Mike Flower won outstanding, okay, our school ball, West Covina School Ball. And he is such a great character. Mike Flower helped the student of West Covina big time. Thank you, Mike. You sure don't want to say something? Yeah, cowboy shirt is fine, okay? Okay, next.
Can I have Karen Yu from the Chinese American Association of West Covina presenting on behalf of the sister city Fuchin?
Hold up. I think it should be Japanese, Okinawa is our first sister city. Pearl? Pearl, okay. We have a four-sister city. And Pearl represented Japanese, American, and with Okinawa, okay? And it is continued, we still have exchange student from both city. And you want to say something?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Pearl Omia, and I'm from the East San Gabriel Valley Japanese Community Center. We are very honored to be here tonight to congratulate both former Mayor Johnson and Mayor Tony Wu. Also, you know, we have cherished this relationship with the city of West Covina for a number of years. We established a sister city relationship in 2001. And we hope to continue this for years to come. So thank you very much and congratulations to all of you and the city council as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Pearl, okay. Thank you, okay. Okinawa is our sister city, continue very strong. And they have their student come to, exchange student come to our city. At the same time, we have our student go to the Okinawa. Okay, and remember, 2016, we have a three-city council, including myself, went to Okinawa, it's such a beautiful city, okay? And we welcome the mayor come to our city again. So thank you so much, okay? Okay. Oh, yes. So you want to show to the Okinawa mayor that she show up? And her boss, Tim? Okay, thank you. Pearl, come back.
I have Fuchin next.
The Beijing Fong Tai? Okay.
Congratulations, former mayor Lloyd Johnson and our good friend, Tony. I bring the letter, congratulation letter, from the mayor of the Beijing Fong Tai to the honorable Mayor Tony Wu. My sincere congratulations on your success in the election of West Covina city mayor because your great effort and support. Fong Tai Beijing and West Covina City built a friendship bond in November 2017. The bond has been continuously strengthened over the past two years, especially in youth exchange experience. The bonding relationship with West Covina holds great importance and value to Fong Tai Beijing. As the mayor of Fong Tai Beijing, it will be my pleasure to work together and expand our bonds to more domains. By doing so, our friendship will only grow closer and stronger. Last but not least, please come to, come and visit Fong Tai Beijing when you have the time. We will be honored to have you as our guest, mayor of Fong Tai Beijing.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, do you have EDI? You want to do it now?
And also, on behalf of EDI Media Inc., as we are the media company who work on the Asian-American media business. This is our 30 years in town. So we will, congratulations to the mayor, Tony Wu.
Quickly, maybe, okay, people don't know who is James. I think everybody know who is James, okay? James is our local resident, and he own EDI Media Group. I think you guys know, they're a pretty big media company, including the TV station, radio, et cetera, et cetera. And they've been continuing and helping the community. And two years ago, you donated $10,000 for our shop local after-school program, right? Time's up, it's another $10,000, maybe you need to donate to our... And, yeah, okay, but he's really helping our student. He give $10,000 for three schools, Covina Unified, no, two schools, Covina Unified and West Covina Unified School for the after-shop local after-school program. And he's really helping our student. And so meaning, okay, he not only in our city, at the same time, he helping our student and for their growth, for their future. Thank you so much for EDI and James. And another thing, quickly, I want to talk about Fong Tai. Fong Tai is our sister city, Beijing, okay? And they continue every year, they send 50 student to our city. And we have a good connection with them. And hopefully next year, Angel, so we could send our 50 student to Beijing. And hopefully you continue have this relationship with Beijing and West Covina. But thank you so much, appreciate it.
Karen Yu with the letter from the sister city Fuchin, please.
You don't have a certificate and you want to come over here to talk? I'm so sorry.
Congratulations.
You're doing the phone, reading the phone?
Yeah, it's 2019. It's paperless.
She said, she says a paperless.
Yeah, to save, you know, yeah, environmental issue. Congratulations. Yeah, it's your night.
It's not my night, it's Lloyd's night.
Okay, and Lloyd's night, yeah. So I would like to take this opportunity to present a letter from one of our sister city, Fuchin Beijing.
You can print it out, okay?
All right, can I continue, please?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, so I can get on the stage. So I'm going to read it one word, two words, okay? I'm not supposed to... Okay, all right, so here we go. Distinguished Mayor Tony Wu, please allow me to extend our sincere congratulations to you on behalf of Fengshui Municipal People's Government, China. Fengshun, Fengshun People's Government, China.
Fuchun.
Fuchun, Fuchun. You make me nervous. It's not because of you, okay? All right. Fuchun, Beijing的Fuchun城市. The city is actually 6,258 miles away from us. So I did study, okay? And they speak Chinese, the people over there speak Chinese.
Are you sure?
All right. As the first Chinese-American mayor in the 95 years' history in West Covina, immigrant, okay? I'm not supposed to change the word here, okay? Sorry. So your election is the proud, proud, proud of all Chinese in the world. A round of applause, please. So wish you every success in your work and the communication and cooperation between West Covina and Fuchun will be better and better in the future.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen, okay. Quickly, Fuchun is a sister city starting last year, okay? And 2017, we have a Beijing Fong Tai, okay? And last year, we have Fuchun. And this year, we have, okay, and Harbin. Harbin is about 10 million population, is the capital of Hailongjiang. And they really want to build a relationship. And for Fuchun, they are famous of coal mine. And I think they are going to exchange student with us too. So we kind of put West Covina on the map. But thank you so much, appreciate it, okay?
If I could have Cece Ku presenting for sister city Harbin come up.
Yes, thank you, Cece, okay. This is Harbin. We went with Lloyd Johnson and Michael Garcia. We went to their snow and ice and snow festival. It's very famous, they carve everything. I put on the Facebook, unbelievable, beautiful. And it's, okay, I think it's good for us to make a direct flight from Ontario to Harbin, it's only nine hours, okay? And we can go over there, they come over here, so we can do a tourism, okay? And because it's much cheaper for us to go over there, nine hours fly, and to see the beautiful snow and ice festival. And it's totally, totally different. So anyway.
Anyway.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, thank you. I'm Cece president of Northeast Overseas Chinese Friendship Association, Southern California. I feel very honored to be here representing Harbin government and Harbin city's mayor Sunze to present three rewards to West Covina. The first one, friendly exchange city relationship between West Covina, China, Harbin. Another letter congratulation from Harbin mayor to West Covina mayor Tony Wu.
Thank you.
And the third one, invitation to the 36th International Ice and Snow Festival period between January. We, you know, we still remember, last year, we visit Harbin and... Yeah, Pasadena mayor, we're together and the jointing. So the first, read? No? You know, Harbin is my hometown, and West Covina is my neighbor. So I think in the future, I will do my best, always support you, assist you between the two city. And if you need anything, we will do my best to support the...
We need money.
Yeah, of course, I need you. So take picture.
Can we have Eli Lieberman, sister city from Israel, come up, please?
Oh, Israel, okay. We might go to Israel too. Who won't go to Tel Aviv?
I'm sorry that the certificate has not arrived yet. However, we're going to go to Israel next January in my jet. And I'm going to introduce you to the city, the city that I grew up, that today is one of the most high-tech city in the world. Intel biggest center is there. And actually, every component that you have in your cellphone or computer is being built there. So congratulations for your mayor. I know that you're going to do a great job. And January 14, you're going to fly to Israel.
Okay, thank you. So you heard about January, right? Okay, he's gonna take us to Tel Aviv. If we have time, but we busy, okay? Next, please.
Fernandico from the Filipino-American community of Los Angeles, please come up.
Good evening, everyone. In behalf of the Filipino-American community of Los Angeles County, our congratulation to our new mayor of city of West Covina, honorable mayor Tony Wu. In recognition of your leadership, hard work, dedication and service to the Filipino-American community in the city of West Covina, your commitment to the Filipino empowerment in this community is to be commended. Thank you so much.
I want to quickly say something about Filipino-American community in West Covina. Okay, and Filipino-American in West Covina has the biggest group beside the Hispanic group, okay? The second one is Filipino-American. And this morning, we just went to the grand opening for the, okay, JDB. JDB is, okay, number, number four, okay, number one, the biggest, okay, food corporation in Asia. And now they moving West Covina, their headquarters. And I'm so honored for Filipino-American to work with city, okay, or West Covina because we are together, this our city, okay, we want to build together. So I want to thank so much for the, okay, the AWA County Filipino-American represent the West Covina community of Filipino-American to come over here and we want to work together and we want the Filipino-American to come in, to help out, to build our city, to improve our city, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Also, I'd like to give my appreciation to, or my congratulations to our first Filipino-American councilwoman, the city of West Covina. You're honorable. Congratulations.
And this morning, this morning, the JDB, I already mentioned about, it's so proud, we have, lady, lady? Okay, we have so proud to have a first American, okay, Filipino-American to be elected as a city councilwoman. And not only that, she will be the first, okay, elect male pro tem. And the next year, December, she will be the first time, the Filipino-American mayor of West Covina, okay? I, I, I hope not, not bad thing happen to me, but otherwise, she will. She might kill me, so she will be earlier, okay? But anyway, congratulation, okay, thank you so much.
Can I have Angel Chu from the Chinese-American Association of West Covina come up, please?
Ooh, flower. Oh. Finally, I have some flower.
Good evening, mayors, city council staff. I'm grateful for this opportunity here tonight with present Chinese-American Association of West Covina, CAWC. My name's Angel Chu. To unite and empower to promote West Covina prosperity, that is the slogan of CAWC. Congratulations, Mayor Wu. We are confident that under your leadership, West Covina become a better city. And today, we have a lot of member from CAWC, can you, do you mind to come over? We'll take a picture with the, can you come? Yeah, CAWC, yeah, all member. So of course, this is your flowers. Thank you very much, thank you.
Sorry, Donja Zamora from the National Association of Hispanic Real Estate Professionals of the San Gabriel Valley, please come up.
Thank you, Tony. I don't know if you guys know, but actually Tony is Hispanic.
Yes. Mi hen de. So you should can say hi ear amigo, viva West Covina.
Exactly. My name is Donaji, I'm representing the National Association of Hispanics Real Estate Professionals. I'm the upcoming vice president for next year. And Tony has helped us throughout the past couple of years, you know, with our community. And we do thank you. I did not bring a certificate, but I did bring you something, a little pin.
In gold, right?
Yes, of course, it's gold. It's an honorary pin. And this will actually make you a platinum member of our National Association of Hispanic Real Estate Professionals.
So I will be honorable Hispanic.
You will, yes. And that makes you a member for life as well. So thank you for all of your help and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you so much.
And all of you guys as well. Lloyd, you were great, by the way, as a mayor. Thank you, everybody.
Okay, next.
Pastor TC Johnson from Murf Chapel St. Paul, the San Gabriel Valley, N double ACP, please come up.
I have a friend. I have a friend.
I have a friend too.
I have a friend, I do.
I'm your friend.
I have a friend.
I have a friend.
I have a friend.
I have a lot of friends.
His name is Mayor Tony Wu.
My pastor.
Praise the Lord. On behalf of the San Gabriel Valley, N double ACP, President Atis J. Campbell, myself, Pastor TC Johnson, Murf Chapel St. Paul AME Church, we are so delighted that you are now the mayor of West Covina. We also are thankful for former mayor Lloyd Johnson, who come to so many events at Murf Chapel as well as N double ACP. We look forward to working with you. We look forward to seeing you on Sunday as we celebrate our 39-year anniversary. Murf Chapel St. Paul, where it used to be a gas station there. So now you can fill up with the spirit.
Yes.
And not gasoline. So thank you, mayor.
Hallelujah.
Wonderful brother.
Thank you, Pastor Johnson. I have a lot of friends.
Can I have Chris Nandry and Mike Meldstrom from the Christ Lutheran School come up?
Good evening, everybody.
Hi, principal.
Good to see you.
Good to see you too.
Good to see you. To my left is school board president, Michael Meldstrom. I welcome him tonight. We have some other council members here from our, our church. And you heard from Pastor Hamel earlier this evening. And I just wanted to reach out this evening to Tony. And thank you so much for all of your many, many years of support to our church and school. Thank you for bringing in all of the donors through the years and, and all of the other supporters that have helped our children. And it's helped all the children in West Covina that attend our school, so I appreciate that. Congratulations to you as our new mayor. And also, thank you, former mayor Johnson, for your support of our school through the years as well. So thank you so much. And a certificate for you, you can open it up. Congratulations. And looking forward to many more years.
Yes. Quickly, Christ Lutheran Church, Justin C. over there taking pictures. Okay, and Megan, they all went to the preschool. And now they are, they are exactly, can you believe it? Okay, time flew by. And so, so Christ Lutheran Church is such a wonderful school and church. And thank you so much for your support. And we will continue to support you. And we know you support Halloween, we have thousand people showing up. And thank you so much for your contribution for our community, thank you.
Okay, can we have Danny Zhang from the Ha, Ha Se Peaking Opera Academy of Los Angeles come up, sorry.
Oh, the fine art, okay, the academy.
Honey, what do you want me to say?
See, I have honey for tonight.
I just found out you have more than one honey, huh? You want me say official or private?
My wife's right there.
Okay. Okay, I'm nervous. I'm an actress, but I'm nervous. I'm very happy to be here, to be here, to see the process of your show. You always be there to watch our show. And I would like to thank you for the former mayor. You always be there to watch our show. Yeah, I'm so, so soon. Okay, I'm gonna, okay. On behalf of the Chinese opera community, I'd like to thank, thank Mayor Tony Wu for your continuous support of our art and artists. We look forward to working with you and bring the Chinese opera to this wonderful city of West Covina so the children can learn and appreciate the beauty of our art. Thank you. My name is Danny Zhang and I present this certificate of appreciation to Mayor Tony Wu on behalf of Ha Se Peaking Opera Academy of Los Angeles. Okay, I feel a little bit embarrassing and ashamed about my certificate. It's the first certificate I, I'm giving out. Thank you very much. Thank you, congratulations.
Thank you. Danny Zhang is a very famous opera artist in China, okay? And she immigrate, immigrate to United States and studying the academy and teaching the children to appreciate the fine art. And that is a tradition, thousand years of that opera. And she is trying to continue to have that tradition so for people wanting to learn. And hopefully, you have a chance to come to West Covina and teach our student over here. And for your talent, continue to, okay, have a tradition going on for this, okay? And opera artists, okay, for all the children, thank you so much. Appreciate, okay, thank you.
Can I have Yin Wong from the U.S. Census Bureau come up, please?
You had a flower here, you can go first. I'm Professor Richard Liu, I'm retired. And Tony is our guest speaker for North American, China, China American Writer Association. He had, he had the keynote speaker before. So today, I bring something for this back from his hometown, Taiwan, Taipei. And also, I bring my the earbook inside, the big certificate for him, have his name. And also, this one for you. Congratulations.
Quickly, Richard is a president of writer association and I support the fine art, I support all the artists because they are very difficult to survive. And I think we need to help them, especially they continue to struggle and continue to carry on, to find out the art, the writing. So I want to appreciate, okay? And they continue to develop, okay, for our community to appreciate, okay? The writing, to appreciate, okay, the painting, appreciate the music, I think it's so important, okay? And the children without art, they basically, they will go to all the different area, but with art, they appreciate. So I think so important to bring this into our community, thank you so much, Richard. Thank you.
So my name is Yan Wong and I'm the recruiting manager of U.S. Census Bureau. And tonight, I'm so proud of Mayor Tony Wu. As the first immigrant, it's never easy. You need to overcome so many difficulty, so many difficulties. And I just met the old friends over there. And yeah, congratulations. And our U.S. Census Bureau offers over 500,000 job openings nationwide. So depending on the population and we have, we need to allocate 6, 675 billion dollars allocated into each community. Then we will have, we will benefit your hospitals, your schools. And Adam's stories never happen again because we recruit more people working for us. And like, if you call 911 and you have plenty enough like firefighters to be there to save persons' lives. Thank you so much. Congratulations.
Can I have?
I think the Census 2020 is very important. I think they coming out, so everybody to report, okay? Truthfully about the population, about how many people live in their home. So please fill up the Census 2020, okay? So we can get, okay, the federal help, okay, the grant, okay? It's all depend on the population, okay? Yes.
Jane Sun, CEO from South Hills Academy.
Okay, South Hills, South Hills Academy.
Congratulations, mayor. This is Jane Sun from Hong Kong and Shenzhen, the most richest city in China. So congratulations for the mayor of the city of West Covina. And I'm very honored to invite my principal to, on behalf of South Hills Academy, for your electing and acting to be the mayor of the city. I know you love money. And with your big mouth and persuasion, persuasion, I made the decision.
I need translate.
Yeah, I made the decision to spend millions.
To help the city.
To investment for you.
Okay.
Thank you, and this is my students from.
I, I do have, I'm the principal, I don't need this. Congratulations, Tony. I would like to make one recommendation for a motion to your council, and that is, Congress and the Senate both have a five-minute speaking limit. I think that that's a good thing to pass.
Your time's up, your time's up. And quickly, okay, South Hill Academy is in West Covina for a long time. And currently, they helping the exchange student come to West Covina for Beijing-Fong Tai, the 50 student. They, they went to South Hill Academy. And hopefully, we can expand it to the, our public system. So public school can, okay, accept the, the exchange student. So in that way, we can have more student come to our city. So, but thank you so much for South Hill Academy, okay? And you are also South Hill Academy, okay, all student on the, on Francisco, right? Yeah, okay, thank you so much for coming, thank you. Are we done, are we done?
No, if we can have Lingger Chu from the L.A. Diamond Lions Club come up, please? She's coming up.
Lions, okay. Sorry, guys, okay?
Everybody, I'm Lingger Chu, representative of the, you know, L.A. Diamond Lion Clubs. Okay, this is all our group come here celebrate for our new mayor, for Tony Wu, okay? Congratulations.
Is that money? No. But we have half. Is it Thai? Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Thank you so much. Appreciate. Yeah. Okay. Okay. And another gold pin. I think it's a fake one, though. Thank you so much. Okay, appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Xie xie la. Thank you.
Can I have Annie Chu with the Chinese Magazine, please come up?
Are we done?
Congratulations. So we just got the new printout of the Chinese magazine as our new mayor, Mr. Tony Wu, on our cover. So he hasn't seen the cover yet, so it's gonna be a little surprise for him. So the shipment is on the way from China all the way to here. So I only got a cover for you, and then so I hope you like it, but we can change it in the future. So after hearing all the story, and then Chinese magazine is very honored and proud, and I was the one that were interviewing Mr. Tony Wu. And he's a great mentor, has a great sense of humor. And then he's a successful businessman, and then he's also a very good community leader. And he's just very good, and I congratulate on your new adventure. And I look forward to, you know, discover more story of West Covina. And also, in the future, we would love to establish like a writing program. So if anybody love to write, and then we're happy to publish for you guys. And I'm also a former West Covina resident, so I'm...
Formal.
And as what Tony was asking me, and then I will move back to West Covina.
Yes.
And then we wish to continue serve the community and also to support Mr. Tony Wu. Thank you. Congratulations. We need a picture.
That's okay, it's okay.
If there's any other organization we missed, please step up now. Otherwise, we're gonna... All right.
Okay.
I have Lion District Governor Nick Delicana and Grand Night Max Dominguez and Edigi also. Governor of Lions Club.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Congratulations.
Thank you again. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. One more, okay?
Hi, hello. This is Mr. Yan, and he is the chief representative of USA China Entrepreneurs Association. And we all come from Beijing. And today, we want to congratulate that Tony Wu was elected as a mayor of West Covina. And this is the present we brought from Beijing.
We need a stamp.
Yeah, we have a stamp.
You have a stamp? Thank you so much. Okay, okay. Okay, Mr. Ocho is an artist from China. She's going to present his, her own painting to our new mayor, Tony Wu.
Very祝贺 you, huh? 我不太会讲英文
Thank you so much. Congratulations, yeah. You are now new mayor of West Covina City. Thank you. Thank you. And I want to say, Miss Shi is a very famous artist in China, okay? And I went to her exhibition, okay? And I think I posted on Facebook, remember that the beautiful painting is from her, okay? And she came, and she want to attend this event, okay? And she want to show, and show the painting. Hopefully, next time you have a chance, you can have an exhibition in West Covina. It's a beautiful painting, it's very, very good. Okay, thank you so much. Appreciate it. We done? Do we have anybody want to come up? Okay, so we done? Anybody want to come up? Okay. Oh, okay. Oh.
Good evening, everybody. My name Zhu Junying. I'm a Chamber of Commerce, Singapore, and America. I bring this yellow rainbow. That's mean celebrating Mr. Wu become mayor of West Covina.
Not emperor?
Yeah, yeah. I wish West Covina better and better.
Thank you so much, okay? And the note is, business association and been came to, come to the West Covina many, many times, okay? And bring the business and bring people over here. Hopefully, we continue to have this relationship. But thank you for this yellow, okay, scarf, okay? It's so beautiful. Thank you so much. Really appreciate it. Thank you so much, okay?
If that's it, we're gonna conclude with these flowers from Cathway Bank.
Oh, Cathway Bank. Oh, okay. Can, thank you, Cathway Bank. Are we done? Okay. Oh, okay. I know, I know. You say, give me a break, hurry up, okay? Get this thing over with. Okay, I want to get this over with. Okay, I want to say, okay, few words, okay? Anybody I didn't mention, okay, I'm sorry. Okay, you want to say something, welcome, come over here, say something. Okay, Alfred Williams, thank you so much for coming up, okay? And a lot of people, okay? Fortuna, Mr. Fortuna, thank you so much to be here. Okay, a lot, okay? And, okay, Fabio, thank you so much for be here, okay? And my staff come over here. I'm not gonna pay you overtime, okay? So... With your freeway, okay? But anyway, thank you so much to be here. Okay, but quickly, okay? And, oh, Lucy over here, thank you so much, okay, to be here. But I really appreciate, okay, all the love, okay? And all you showing up tonight, okay? And for this, speaking true, the mayorship is not really such a big deal, okay? And, okay, but it's very honor to be a mayor of West Covina because West Covina is such a big city, a beautiful city, a vibrant city. And I want to thank all my council member, their endurance with me because my big mouth, okay? And so they're helping me together, even Lloyd Johnson, okay? And we work together. But I really quickly want to conclude with this, is this. A lot of people say you have no chance to do anything in your life. And I would tell them this, look at me. American dream is life and well because I'm an example of American dream. I came over here as an immigrant, and I went to the school in film. And later on, okay, I get kicked out into Hollywood. Then I decided, damn, I'm going to make some money, and I'm going to buy Hollywood. So I went to real estate business and be successful. And later on, okay, I decided to come out to serve. And I want to thank, okay, the Pastor Johnson, okay, with NAACP. And I went to their event, I told them this, without their struggling and fighting, I have no chance to serve today to be a mayor of West Covina because civil rights from them, and that's why we can more equal and just. So that's why today I want to share with you is the what my background to become who I am today, okay? And to serve and try to help the city, okay, be vibrant, okay? And be proud for all the residents and for our future generation continue to vibrant in our city. And that's what this about. And we allow all our people in different group, Filipino-American, African-American, okay, Caucasian-American, the Asian-American, Japanese-American, and all come together today. And Hispanic-American, the big 50% of our population, all come today together, united in West Covina, and what this is about. So I want to thank you. Marsha, thank you so much. As our auditor, I think our books look okay? Okay, so you showing up, it touch my heart. I want to thank you so much. Jerry, okay, the architect, okay? I appreciate, okay, my appointed, okay, community, okay, service commissioners. And Gail, thank you so much, okay? We are church member. But again, we are all friend, we are all neighbor, we work together, right? We want to build our city, make our city better. So conclusion, thank you so much. So honored to be mayor of West Covina. I cannot say I waiting year and a half already. Finally, today is the day, and tonight is the night. But thank you so much. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. I want to turn over to our Assistant City Clerk.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. I'd like to ask for a motion and a second to modify the mayoral succession order tonight with Tony Wu as mayor and Letty Lopez Viado as Mayor Pro Tem, which will require a four affirmative votes. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Motion? Motion? A motion, please?
I'll make a motion.
Oh, I didn't hear her, sorry.
Our councilwoman, Shoemaker made a motion, and we have our councilman, Casiano, second. So can I have a roll call, please?
Yes. Councilman Castellanos?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Shoemaker?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Wu?
Aye. Five zero, approve. Thank you. Okay. Okay, we go to destination of alternate to the Los Angeles County Senate, okay, sanitation district. And currently, I am the mayor, so I will be, okay, the, okay, the sanitation representative. And then we're going to nominate Dario Casiano as the alternate. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Okay, all approve? Any objection? So... So five zero approve. Do I have any of comment from council members? Go ahead, Casiano.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And congratulations on your ascent to mayor. And thank you, Mayor Lloyd Johnson, for your tenure as mayor. And one thing I'd like to comment today, we had, we were on TV. Our police department was involved in a chase that began on the freeway, and it was a very successful, very professional resolution. So thank you, guys, for that. And while we're at that, thanking our police department, I'd like to also thank our fire department for the Gold Service EMS Award. Thank you, guys, both.
And any other comment from our council member? Letty Lopez, want to say something?
You said it all. I just wanted to say thank you, thank you, Mayor Johnson, well, former Mayor Johnson. And congratulations. I do look forward to working with you and making our city a vibrant, successful city. And thank you for everybody who attended here today. It was nice seeing the full support, seeing it differently. So thank you again, and we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. If I don't have anything, should I move to adjourn? Yep, the meeting adjourned. Okay.